Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Can we stand for a moment of silence for her followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul.
We have a proclamation that reads as: Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, income levels, lifestyles, and genders, and in fact probably affecting someone you know. Whereas one in three women or one in nine men will be a victim of violence in their lifetime, domestic violence violates an individual's human rights by destroying dignity, security, self-worth due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. Safe Place works every day to help in these acts of violence and to help rebuild the lives of the survivors. And whereas in Suland, the Safe Place is available 24 hours a day, providing immediate response to nearly 2,700 adults and children in danger or in crisis. And despite increasing needs and diminishing funding, no one in an unsafe situation was turned away. Whereas the impact of domestic violence affects all the members of the community, and only a coordinated community response will put a stop to this atrocious crime and assure funding is continuously available to provide these life-saving services. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, am on behalf of the City Council to hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Sioux City, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled events and programs and to think about the fact it is someone you know. I'd like to present this to you and thank you very much for all that you do and say a few words if you want.
Every person in Suland deserves safety in their home and community, and everyone has a role in ensuring that. While some agencies are tasked to primarily respond to violence, it takes a community to change the culture that allows violence to continue. To know how to respond to this violence, we must understand the root causes, that is what we must address as we also respond to the needs of victims. Domestic violence is a particular kind of violence. Abusers use a variety of tactics to control and harm their victim. It is not random. It is not mental illness, nor is it drug abuse. It is simply a decision by the abuser to be abusive because it works. Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a particular time for people to look within reach, to look within, reach out, to do whatever they can to help change the culture that continues to harm our community in so many ways. Funding for victim services has consistently gone down every year for the past five years. This funding supports traumatized families, it helps them survive and continue to remain active, productive members of our community. While always grateful for the funding we receive, it does not reflect the magnitude of victims' needs, the basic needs, housing, food, funds to pay bills, transportation, daycare, all to help thrive. It helps our entire community thrive. So thank you for signing this proclamation to show your support and to encourage the members of our community to do all they can to help create change. Support victim service agencies, support legislation that provides funding for victims and their families, and work to change the culture so that everyone can live a free life from violence. I did think it was important to note that our year here in Suland started out with four homicides in January alone and has continued through the rest of the year. And so you all have the vigil flyer up with you this Thursday where we will be reading the list, the stories of people we've lost in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Okay, Dan, you have somebody you'd like to introduce?
I do. I'm very proud and pleased to introduce Mayor and City Council members. I'd like to introduce Emily Gamble. If you'd please stand up, Emily. Emily is a scout troop 272 from Sergeant Bluff. She's been working hard for her Eagle Scout Award, and I know you'll make it because I just know you'll make it. She's also here with her father, Mark Gamble, who's also is on the committee at Troop 272. And one of her assignments, I am pleased to announce, is coming to the Sioux City City Council and see just what goes on here today. So I'm going to help Emily in any way I can to achieve that goal, and I just wish you the best. I want to thank you for being here today, Emily.
Thank you for being here. We'll go to Wastewater Treatment Plant Reconstruction and Design Advisory Committee. Thomas Anderson, please come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
I'm Tom Anderson. I work at Hard Side Industries in North Sioux City, known as InterBake Foods. I'd like to serve on it because we put a lot of water down the drains to the city of Sioux City, want to see how it's constructed and how it will affect the other communities, let alone Sioux City, you know, for the intake that we provide and how it's treated pre-treatment. I know there's a lot of industries, and I'd like to see more industries come to the city. That's why I'd like to serve on it, make sure it's get built and supplies everybody.
Excellent. Thanks for making the application.
Thank you.
Question? It looks like there's six applications and six people applying, so you've got a really good, I think you're going to make it. Jason Yaki, same thing. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm Jason Yaki. I've worked for the Andersons, which used to be NutriFlow for 33-plus years. Back in the good old days when we were NutriFlow, we were frequent contributor to the wastewater treatment plant anymore. We are mostly self-contained with water, but we do sometimes still send slug flows down there. And basically, my interest is to make sure that this thing, you know, goes as well as possible and, you know, make sure we're not sitting here, you know, listening to people complain that things didn't go the way they thought it did the last time this happened. I mean, because I can remember when that happened and being at NutriFlow at that time, you know, it was kind of a disappointment. So hopefully, this goes a lot better.
Thank you for coming down for the tour last week. I appreciate you spending all that time down there and visiting afterwards.
Definitely.
It's really eye-opening.
They've gotten a lot of challenges.
They do. It's amazing that they're keeping it running after they explain to everyone how it actually all works and the biology and the science involved in it.
Yeah, it was an eye-opening experience for me.
Good. Well, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
We'll go to Consent Agenda Items 3 through 13D. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item, please come to the podium as I read that item. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, on the agenda, please come under Citizen Concerns. Remember to always state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is the reading of the September 25th City Council Minutes. Four is a motion accepting the Environmental Advisory Board and a report. Five is a resolution adopting the third quarter supplement to the municipal code. Six are actions relating to grants and donations. A is a resolution accepting an air service development grant from IDOT to assist with marketing at the airport. B is a resolution accepting a grant agreement from the IDOT for commercial service vertical infrastructure funding for the T-Hanger construction project at the airport. C is a resolution accepting a donation from Simco for recreation equipment for the Chris Larson Park Development Project. D is a resolution authorizing the police department to accept a JAG program fund. E is a resolution authorizing the police department to apply for a grant to purchase a True Narc Drug Detection System. Seven are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area on November 20th for the Downtown Holiday Light Parade. B is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of West 7th Street on October 21st for the 712 Trunk or Treat on West 7th event. Eight are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Hamilton Boulevard median removal project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Boulevard of Champion's Drainage Improvements Project. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding a contract to Knife River Midwest for the Hamilton Boulevard resurfacing project. B is a resolution approving Amendment Number One to the Consulting Services Agreement for JEO Consulting for the Pier Street Water Main Replacement Project. C is a resolution approving Change Order Number Three to the Contract for InshaForm Technologies for the Floyd Interceptor Sanitary Sewer Lining Project. D is a resolution approving a four-year Vision Provider Agreement with VSP. E is a resolution approving an agreement for maintenance of storm water detention systems for Roy Dave and accepting a permanent easement. F is a resolution approving an agreement for the maintenance of the storm water detention system with the goodwill of the Great Plains and accepting a permanent easement. G is a resolution approving an agreement for maintenance of the storm water detention system for the Rosecrans Jackson Centers and accepting a permanent easement. Mayor, I need to abstain on that item. Conflict of interest?
I just want to call out Gordon. Thank you for bringing these forward. You don't have to come up here. I just appreciate that. I'm glad that we are including this language going forward and that we're going to start to see more of these, like you said, because I think that's important to get that worked out so that they don't get overgrown and have no... Thank you for that.
And are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Knife River Midwest for the Runway 13-31 rehabilitation and lighting upgrade project at the airport. B is a resolution approving Change Order Number Four and authorizing payment to Halstein Escavating for the Floyd Interceptor Emergency Sanitary Sewer Project. Eleven are purchasing a resolution amending Resolution 2023-0848 and the purchase order issued to Stu Hansen Jeep to correct the make and model of the vehicle purchased from an Ford F-450 truck to a Dodge Ram 450 truck. B, a resolution awarding a purchase order to Ed M. Field Equipment to purchase four ambulances. Are we talking six-year lives on these ambulances and that's it?
Jim Hayden, EMS Director. Six years is about it. Initially, when Donna Porcher was in finance, she was suggesting four years. They get quite a bit of use and start having some mechanical issues. Right now, we're having issues with some of the liquid spring and the turbos. We'll get another two years out of them. So I think six years is probably a pretty good projection personally. It's hard.
And we're putting enough money away to buy these? These are unbelievably expensive to me.
They're getting ridiculous. And right now, you can't even find them because of the microchip shortage. And now with the United Auto Workers' strike, that'll probably set it back even further. But it's almost like a supply and demand thing according to some of these manufacturers. They're getting ridiculously priced on some of the Super Duty pickups.
You have all this built in their budget that we haven't seen now for about six months of how much money they're just rolling in here that we were going to get on a regular basis. When's the last time we got one of those?
For the GEMT payments?
What's that?
The GEMT payments? Is that what you're talking about? I can get you a report on that, but we are getting regular payments from them, and we are putting away enough.
Does that show in what they're collecting? Are you showing the depreciation?
Yes.
It does, for sure.
And we have, in 18 months, we'll have plenty of money to replace for what the price is currently right now.
Well, I wish we'd get it. I wish I wouldn't have to ask for that. I wish we would set up a time when we're going to get financials on that at least twice a year.
On the GEMT? I can do that. If you want it, do you want it quarterly or twice a year? I mean, we typically do it with the quarterly report.
When we first went in this business, you remember, we said we were going to get regular statements so we knew because it took a long time to catch up with the money and all that. I just want to...
Nope, we can do that. What I will do is just put it as a component of the quarterly statements that we do. So you get those quarterly, and then we can put that as a component.
Yeah, don't put it in the weekly, don't put it in the weekly council deal.
No. Nope, I won't do that.
Do it separate.
Yep, I'll put it with the quarterly stuff so you're not getting so many different quarterly reports. You'll see it within that report then.
Thank you.
Yep, we can do that.
Well, just to clarify, Teresa, we've already been setting aside?
Yep. Right now, we have $902,000 set aside in 18 months. When they think that they'll be ready for us, it will be 1.164 million. So we should have enough funds to purchase these at that time. There is also this component here where they say they will give us 3.5% of anything we prepay. We're still determining whether or not we do that. We're in the process of changing our banking, so we want to see what all of our rates are with them prior to us committing to anything.
Measure that risk, right?
You know, I don't want to be the one to tell you this, but ambulance companies or fire truck companies have gone broke.
I was just going to say that.
Yep, nope, I agree. So we're kind of looking at that, but we'll bring that back if that ever becomes anything that we're interested in for your approval.
Thank you.
Jim, I guess the one thing I would just say too, Jim, though, is I'm with you that I'm a little shocked that the lifespan of these are better. I don't know if it's just the weight of the overall suspension or the push of those engines, but you would think that they'd have a little... I'm sure they're getting a ton of miles, but...
Yeah, I mean, the name "Super Duty" doesn't generally, I mean, they don't live up to that as much as you'd think. But once they get about 60,000 to 80,000 miles, you can really see the wear, mainly the suspension and so on, just because they get pretty well-used.
But you're just shocked then that you couldn't at least replace that component or different components of it?
Yeah, well, and Justin the mechanic is replacing quite a few parts on some of those. I think the front end of Medic IV has had at least two rehalls on that, and, you know, I don't know, it just, you want something reliable, and unfortunately, that cost. And that 18-months projection is, that's set a bare minimum. Most of them are saying between 20 and 20 months and two and a half years before they have delivery of even chassis, so trying to plan ahead.
Because there's a consolidation, and like fire trucks, there used to be probably five more manufacturers, and they've all...
Competing against one another and then...
How they're buying each other out and that because...
And right now, like Ford, for instance, isn't even giving the, isn't even giving the manufacturers a projected price. So, I mean, it's just, it's a strange game that they're playing right now.
Thank you. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Hogland Bus Company for two buses for the transit system. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list. Thirteen boards commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items?
So I hit the wrong button, I'm sorry. You're okay. It should be I. I hit the wrong button.
Yeah, correct his to I.
Thank you.
It passes by.
Yeah, I just needed to reset the vote. Go ahead and hit your I's again, please.
Light it up again.
Yeah, I could light it up again. There you go.
Light us up.
Light us up.
Thank you.
Fourteen is a motion appointing representatives of major industrial users to fill vacancies on the wastewater treatment plant reconstruction and design advisory committee. The applicants are Thomas Anderson, Chris Baltus, Kelly Jorgensen, Eric Kafka, Desiree McCaslin, and Jason Yaki. This was deferred from September 18th and 25th, 2023. I'll move that. Second. Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Fifteen is a recommendation of planning and zoning was a hearing in ordinance amending Chapter 25-02 zoning districts and land uses to allow medical facilities to conduct health screenings, testing, and offer showers throughout a mobile shower unit in the parking lot. The petitioner is Suland Community Health. PNZ recommends denial. Mr. Gleiser?
Shall we open?
I'm going to open. I'll move it. Second. Public hearing's now open.
Yeah, Andrew Gleiser, Planning and Zoning Chair. This item's come back and forth between us a few different times. We're really struggling with changing the code specifically for Suland District Health and allowing them to basically keep their shower trailer, you know, technically off-site, but just across the street in their parking lot that they just redid.
It's commuter, you know?
I'm sorry. So, yeah, it's filled with us again with, I think it was a...
One to five.
One to five vote, yeah.
Do you know, do they have a sewer outlet there?
They do not. They would have to get it pumped, is what they told us. They get it pumped every couple of weeks, I believe, to get the...
Like an RV?
But they did. They went ahead when they built the parking lot. They put in water and electrical utilities for that shower trailer there.
So, I speak from a little experience. We do a thing called Life Changers, and we borrow their trailer, by the way. I don't have any financial gain or anything, so I don't have a conflict, but I'm curious. I mean, so we take that to our church, and we have a sewer line and a water line, electric line. Are we doing that illegally?
No, because it's just a temporary, it comes in for an event and leaves for an event.
And what PNZ was saying is that this is more permanent in nature because they're not moving it or relocating it. It's not for an event. It's just an addition to their property essentially.
And it's not covered by this existing structure because there's no structure there.
Correct. If they would just move it into their, you know, across the street and into their existing parking lot, we would have no issues.
But that's why, Mayor. If it was seen as an event or way more temporary in nature of what yours is, then they're saying it meets the code.
But they're not there all winter using it.
No, but they're going to leave it parked there.
Well, they parked it there for two years. I've seen it. They have it there for a couple of years.
But there was another structure there.
There was a structure there at the time.
Right, so it followed...
There was a structure there at the time.
And so that was grandfathered under that.
It's like the tiny houses at Britnan.
This falls exactly under the no-good deed goes unpunished.
Yes.
It does.
I hate to tell you that, but I don't...
We're just trying to defend the code, Mayor.
I understand, but how is my lot that's right next door to my lot not part of my, not part of...
Your building or structure.
I guess all these planners will have to tell me, but how is that not part of their business? You know, we got guys running, go up Pier Street, we got guys running the construction yard up on about 14th. Illegal as can be, but yet we don't say anything to them. When are we going to start? If we're going to enforce these rules like that, then when are we going to enforce them all around here is my problem.
Wade, what is the notion of that if it's not directly adjacent to the building but still on their campus or on their property?
Wait, she'll plan her. So this has come back several times, and it's been going on for about a year.
Yeah.
Well, a little over now. They originally brought those plans forward and DRC, and at that time, we discussed with them through the representative, which was DGR Engineering at the time, that they would no longer be able to operate their trailer, shower trailer, at that site because the principal building was being demolished. A parking lot is not a principal building. So, and right now, PNZ, well, Suland Community Health Center has four options, which is spelled out in the RCA.
Yeah.
That's in your packet. So currently, the mobile unit can be stored and operated on the primary site of their medical clinic, which is where their site is. Additionally, it could also be stored and operated at the site of another medical clinic or facility related to the property zone, and we've had discussions to possibly move it to the warming shelter site. And Suland Community Health Center has basically said that this is one of their primary, basically customer bases, I guess would be a slow way to, best way to say that. So we've, there's a couple of options there right now. Additionally, we are not stopping them from going and doing, if they wanted to do like a health event, so like if, I think there was one there this summer where I think Food Bank was there and several other organizations were there on the site. And so that was like considered like a temporary, like a special event. Additionally, they could also have the option of building a permanent structure that would basically serve the same purpose, but then it would be considered a principal structure and not an accessory use to that lot.
So what happens if they find a church like mine in the downtown area that would let them put it there permanently? Then what?
Well, there's a principal structure at that lot. So if the lot has a principal structure, so in this case, if the church was the principal structure for that lot, they could operate that.
So you got them when they tore the old First Federal down, the old great Southern one?
Yeah, so we told them, it was DGR that brought it forward, and we told them at that time that they would no longer be able to operate their shower trailer at that site.
Before they even tore it down?
Yes.
And how long do you consider a special event?
So, well, special events in the code, and it's in 25, let's see here, 25.02.107 or 17. It has, what that's basically spelled out to is basically is a special event. It would be similar to what, when RagBri was here and they had all the portable toilets, showers, other...
I'm asking the timeframe. How many weeks? How many days?
It would be a couple of days.
So if they put that shower unit there for more than two days, they're in violation of our ordinance?
Technically, yes.
And you've got that, it says two days in your ordinance?
It doesn't spell it out exactly in two days. It's a special event. So if the event goes on for one, two days, I mean, it's kind of a substantial...
Or if it's a week-long festival or something like that, similar to what you were saying with RagBri, or, you know, I've been to music festivals that are four days long and have it there or something like that.
Yes.
Well, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but for me, this provides a great community service. I drive by it when they've got it out there. I'm not, I don't see anything that distracts from our community because of it. In fact, I'd make a case it enhances our community, but, you know, if you vacated half of that, if you vacated the street for one half of, right up to the alley, then they'd be legal. Is that right?
I don't know if engineering would go for vacating the next street.
I'm asking you, I didn't say we're going to vacate. I ask you a question. If we vacated the street, one, up to the next alley off of Pier Street, then they'd be legal because it would all be one piece of property. Would that be correct?
Technically, yes.
So that's what we're talking about, 60-foot of right-of-way here, whether you do something or don't do something.
For me, I think the benefits and the needs outweigh what your defense is of what the ordinances read now. And I commend you for rooting the ordinances and talking about this is what they say, this is how we interpret them. But I think the benefits and the needs far outweigh that, and I'm very supportive of this change for the reason that, because of that. I mean, they're doing, they're conducting health screenings, they're testing, and they're offering the showers. And I read somewhere in here where showers are not really a health issue or a health use or a medical use, but showers are extremely important. Not only do they serve cleanliness and health issues and address those, but they also serve getting people ready to go out and try to find jobs and try to actually be in the community and benefit from that. You know, it was recently, I don't know how long ago it was, that the Suland Community Health Center folks came and gave their presentation about the thousands of people they help every year. And I understand your options that you've offered to them, but when I look at their main parking lot, if you ever drive by there during the daytime or the evening, it's full. I mean, it's just full, and they're servicing a lot of people. And so I'm just, I would like to hear from the petitioner, and I'd like to hear from others that support this. I just think it's the right thing to do, and that's, and I feel strongly about that. I'm agreeing with the mayor's points that it's just, you know, it's across the street and it's without the building. And I understand that, but there aren't other, I don't think there are other medical facilities. I could be wrong. I hope I'm wrong in this because if we can help the people in this area, let's help, let's help the people, whoever they are. But I don't think it's going to be a community-wide... they are. But I don't think it's going to be a community wide, look what we've started now, issue. I I really don't.
Just to be fair, we're we're not against the shower.
I was gonna say.
We support the shower trailer. We we do think it's a good thing for the community. We just don't support for the avenue in which they're trying to get it implemented.
Well, I understand, but it's the property for me is contiguous to their property. I realize there's a street in between. I mean, if they were trying to do this three blocks away, okay, I could understand. But that's why they bought that parking lot was to take stress off the parking lot above to to get their employees to park down below. And now we've, now that works against them because they tore that building down, which, by the way, nobody had been in that building for about fifteen, twenty years. I don't really consider it a building at that stage. But that, I mean, I get what you're saying, but.
And that's why we're glad it's in front of you guys.
Exactly. That's what I was gonna say, is that it's like, yeah, I didn't want the characterization or the feelings to be that the planning and zoning is against this or staff is. It's the way that the code is interpreted. I mean, we just had another issue that came before the city council where it was all an interpretation of code and who is meeting the letter of the law. And we had to decide that, similar to how we have to decide this. You're you're doing what you should do, which is interpret the code and try to make it as level of a playing field for everyone that you can. And if we think that there needs to be an exception, ultimately, we make that choice.
Well, but you're actually, you're actually amending, Alex. That's different than interpreting. You're amending this so they can do it.
Correct. Sorry, we would make a change.
Yeah. That's a that's a difference in.
Correct, correct. I do understand what you mean now. Yeah.
All right. Anybody else to be heard?
Joel Voss, fifty five thirty Lorraine Avenue, attorney for Suland Community Health Center. Appreciate the discussion that's been had so far. And where we're at here, this, we have had several rounds, if you will, with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I would say that we had first attempted to obtain a temporary use permit, and that was denied on a four, three basis. And I want to talk about that just a little bit so that the the City Council has the context for why that was denied. And that is, when you when you look at the temporary uses that are permitted in the code right now as it stands, every single one of them is commercial in nature. There's no language in the code that deals with nonprofit temporary uses. And so if you look at the the categories of permitted temporary uses, it's a commercial outdoor sales event, a farmer's market, a roadside stand, seasonal sales, sidewalk sales, public exhibits, truckload sales, and then special events. And so when we were in front of planning and zoning on our temporary use permit, Ryan Ross, who's the attorney on that board, says basically, Joel, where do you fit in this temporary use structure? And and we didn't fit well. And so that's why when we came back from that defeat, which was, it was frustrating because, as Mayor Scott said, it feels like we're being punished for trying to do good in this community. When we stepped back from it, we thought, well, if there isn't a current structure in the code that we fit into well, then proposing a text amendment is what we're going to have to do. And so that's what we, that's why we're here today. And I wanted, there's there's three main points that I wanted to to stress. One, I think, as comments have already said, no one is against this as a use. Everyone feels like this is an important thing for the Community Health Center to be doing as it serves vulnerable populations in our community. But the text amendment is needed, and it's, and this is my second point, and it's appropriately limited so that as you look at this, we're not opening the doors wide open for, you know, everybody and their brother to put a mobile shower unit on their lots, you know, for for those commercial uses that want a temporary use permit. You've got the temporary use structure in the code. They can, they can apply for those things. If you are a farmer's market, you're taken care of. You just aren't taken care of right now if you're a nonprofit use that's trying to reach out to vulnerable populations. Now, and that's a point where I would disagree with with city planning staff, that twenty five point zero two point one seventy has nothing to do with temporary uses. That's a different section entirely. What twenty five point oh two point one seventy does is it sets out permissible institutional uses and then healthcare uses are a category of those institutional uses. And so what our goal was, in this text amendment, was to define that what the Community Health Center is doing is a healthcare use. There, it may not be prescription, but hygiene is basic healthcare. It's healthcare at its most basic. And the screenings and testing that they provide alongside it is absolutely a healthcare use. And then the second thing that that we wanted to to just say is, since there's this whole question about, do you have a principal use on this or is this only an accessory use, is that we wanted to make it clear that we could do this use in a parking lot that we owned. And as Mayor Scott has pointed out, it is right across the street from our main building. And you raise an interesting question because the definition of parcel in our zoning code says a parcel can be one or more lots. It doesn't explicitly state whether there's, can be a street running in between them or not. But we weren't trying to rely on the existing text. We just wanted to clarify the existing text so that it was clear that the use that we are trying to do, which everyone says is a good use, is permissible at this spot. And then the third point I just wanted to make is that this is the location where those services can best be performed. We we understand, and we've understood for this whole process, what city staff is saying about our ability to stick it in our main lot. And we've tried to be consistent in response to say, just look at our main lot. Look at how it's used. And and, you know, do we take a half dozen spots out of circulation for this? Or should we not be permitted to just move it into our parking lot immediately south of our main building?
Yeah, I'm gonna need you to wrap it up.
I'm gonna need you to wrap it up, if you would. Okay.
Thank you.
I I will be done then. But I think the director of the Community Health Center would like to say just a few words about that if that's permitted.
Mr. Voss, I do have one question, Mayor, for you. The the use, how, what's what's the season for the use of the testing, screening and showers?
Sure.
And I'm saying all three because it's in the text amendment that you have to do all three.
The what we have done since, from twenty nineteen until this year, has been a season that runs from June through October. And that that season, more or less, has dovetailed with the period of time when the warming shelter is not open. And from that standpoint, the Community Health Center is filling a gap during that time period. It's not that there's any formal tie between the two organizations, but that was the perceived period of greatest needs. That's historically when it's operated, and that's what we would intend to do going forward if the text amendment is permitted.
So how many times a week?
Typically, twice a week.
Twice?
And so it was kind of, we envisioned an eighteen week season, if you will, twice a week for thirty six, you know, shower events, if you will, for, for lack of a better term.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mary Captain Dolan, four eighty five Titan Road, Hinton, Iowa. Good afternoon. I am the CEO at Suland Community Health Center and just wanted to offer a few clarifying remarks to the comments that have been made. Suland Community Health Center purchased the mobile shower unit in twenty nineteen as part of a national community outreach program. We are one of several health centers and continue to be across the country that provide a mobile shower unit, together with other preventative healthcare services. It is a vital part of health centers' missions. In the past four years, we have provided over eighteen hundred showers. With the exception of this past year, we have operated the shower unit from June one to September thirtieth, offering the services twice weekly. Many of the individuals we serve are experiencing homelessness, but many are not. Many are people living in the neighborhood who are housed but have substandard plumbing or no hot water. Others are individuals recently arriving in the community and using the showers before interviewing for a job. Our vision with the mobile shower unit has been to assist individuals with basic health services. Being clean is not only a fundamental public health tenet, it also affords individuals a sense of self-worth and personal dignity. Also, our vision has been to address the systemic problems of homelessness and poverty. When we offer showers, we also provide clean clothing and shoes along with meals, hydration, and basic personal hygiene items. Our staff, along with other community agencies in the community, offer health screenings and COVID, HIV, hepatitis B and C testing, and equally important, assist with housing and utilities assistance applications as well as job applications. For the past four years, we have provided mobile shower services at the nine twenty four Pier Street parking lot. This was a management and a governance decision. The patient parking lot on Nebraska Street was not an option. The number of parking lot spaces was and continues to be inadequate in accommodating the five hundred plus patients who access our main facility every day. The Pier Street parking lot, on the other hand, is a quieter employee lot and has a recessed area that is more private for people using the showers. It also is readily accessible for American Septic, an Ottawa-based company who drains our waste tanks on a regular basis and has been doing that for several years. In the four years we have operated the showers, we have never received a complaint from business owners in the vicinity. Tim McClintock, who owns McClintock Insurance, which is the only business located adjacent to the Pier Street parking lot, gave us permission to use his name in supporting the shower location and our service. He added that there is never a disruption with the showers, but the people are grateful because they're receiving a needed service and being treated with respect by our staff. In closing, our board and our staff, thank you for the support that you have shown us as city leaders throughout our thirty two year history. We are grateful to each of you and to ask your supporting and allowing us to operate the mobile shower unit and continue our mission, not only to our thirty five thousand patients, but to those in our community who are most vulnerable.
I have a question for you, please, Ms. Captain Dolan. Do you do the, you conduct the health screenings and testing at the at the shower site?
Yes.
Is that where the screenings are done?
Correct.
Testing? Okay. Thank you.
I was just gonna ask that. Thank you.
It, I mean, I know that's not your job. I'm not saying it is. But we, as a city, did we look at another spot we might have? Anybody have any ideas in that area?
Staff had looked at the warming shelter site.
Yeah, I don't want them to be part of the warming shelter site. I'm sorry, but I know what you're saying. But that, they have two different missions. You know what I'm saying? And I'm not sure that that's the solution.
And there were some technical issues with making the warming shelter site work. There's no water or electricity to the side of the building with which it would have to be. And and the slope of the parking lot did not allow for the the trailer without maybe damaging the trailer to get it into the lot. The warming shelter was receptive to having it there, of course, because it is a huge benefit to our community, but that was just not a suitable location.
And I don't know, the mayor, Wade, was asking about city property. If we, and I just, there's anything close that would probably serve the need or, you know, be readily accessible of community health for this.
I know when they first started out doing this, they were proposing to take a Cook Park on certain days to offer showers there. I don't know if those facilities or has the electric and water at the site that would be more parks, question.
And I get our code and I get where you guys are coming from, but to me, that sixty foot of right of way, just if, I don't remember when I moved into my office and it was two separate parcels of property. So you're, you would tell me that that wouldn't qualify because it was not, they were contiguous, but it was two complete separate parcels of property. And that's where I'm struggling.
Yes, Mayor, question for you, and maybe it would be for one of you as well, just because I'm with you in thinking about this and where, and I agree that I want you to enforce the code. Like, I hope that is, I hope it's ringing true, man. And I understand what your job is doing and I appreciate your commissioners for taking it seriously. I really do. I really do. My question more stems from, do we need the amendment or is there a way to give that this is an exception to where then every exception comes to us so that then they can't just fall under the amendment? Or at least we would look to that or it would be brought to you? What would, what would you advise would maybe be the most appropriate? I don't know if the city attorney or who would know or be able to.
Either one would be a text amendment to the code, I believe, to allow for the exception or to change the zoning definition for the allowed use. Either one would be a text amendment.
Chris Mattson Planner, there are a couple of temporary uses that are applicable for a fifteen day temporary use that could be extended by council. Right now, that's not in the code for this type of use. So that could be a text amendment to add that. Or anything over fifteen days would require a council approval.
But this is pretty, I'm just, I don't, I obviously don't know how to read code like you do. I'm not being smart, I don't. But this looks like it's pretty much limited to medical facility type things only, which seems to me to be better than what you're proposing because I don't, I don't see anybody else getting in that business.
I don't either. I think, Chris, it's very, it's very limited. It's well worded. And I understood that you, your staff.
I was just responding to Alex's question.
No, right. But I'm just saying, what would you, okay, then Alex is right. I'll ask you. Wouldn't this be more limited than what you're you're proposing there, though?
It would allow it in any property zone, GC or PI. That'd be the only difference. Whereas if you were to approve that, it would be any event over fifteen days would require council approval. So that would be more limited in scope.
That one would be.
Correct.
I think planning and zoning, excuse me, would, we struggled with the temporary use and we would be more apt to a temporary use than a change of the code.
Well, I.
I'm just speaking for myself, you know.
Well, you're speaking for the majority of the planning and zoning.
I feel like that's the way we would.
And I, and I appreciate that. But but if you actually look at the text amendment change, it's it's very limited. You're talking about hospital, clinic, medical lab, urgent care facility may conduct health screenings, testing, and offer showers through a mobile shower unit, a parking lot owned by the hospital, clinic, medical lab, urgent care facility. Whether or not there is a principal structure locating such lots, such screenings, testing, showers shall be considered a healthcare use. Now, maybe, maybe I need to be corrected on this, but I don't think you can just have showers. You need to have, you have to conduct health screenings and testing as well because it says and, and offer showers. I think it's very limited. And I think it's a, I think it's a good text amendment myself.
Correct. We would have to verify that all three would be occurring on the site.
Pardon?
We would have to verify that all three are occurring within that structure.
Yes. Well, I think they're willing to, I mean, they can, they can give you that evidence that that's what's occurring. I, I think it's a good answer to what you've been wrestling with for the, with for the past year, myself.
Anyone else to be heard?
I think there, yeah, there is.
The only thing else I heard, George.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Alex.
That's okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to speak as an advocate for the Sulon Health Clinic and also for the, for the showers.
George, name and address for the record. I know.
Okay, George Boykin, twenty two oh, twenty seven thirty seven South Lemon.
Thank you. Go ahead.
But I've been, just wanted to start out, I've been associated with the Sulon Health Clinic since nineteen ninety one. And we've grown substantially in the community. We serve thousands of people. Got figures just the other day that we've served over. Got figures just the other day that we've served over a hundred and thirty-one thousand people in this community. This is just part of it. I don't intend to stand here and, and make the same points that other folks have made so eloquently, including yourself. We need this service, it is a healthcare program, and it's unique. No other agency is going to be doing this kind of a thing in the community, just us, and so you're not going to be opening the floodgates for other businesses or even private agencies to get into this kind of service. The individuals, I volunteered there myself, those individuals, those individuals that attend there, I've had comments made to me that, thank goodness, I can get a shower, I can get clean, now I can go apply for a job. Ladies and gentlemen, we're breaking the cycle. You know, the, the, the reasons that's been given already for not doing it, to me, is not legitimate, it really isn't. You know, we own the property north of there, with the clinic on it. The street in between us is the, seems to be the obstacle. You know, we own that piece of property, but if we don't do this, we're not gonna, we're not gonna provide services for over eighteen hundred people a year or more, because it is a needed service, ladies and gentlemen, and it has a rippling effect. You know, these folks are going to be productive citizens in the, in the, in the community, but they need a hand up, they need this. So I would hope that you would, you know, make an adjustment, make an amendment, so this can happen. This is not a permanent facility that's going to be there, it is, it is temporary, and we would love to have it, and I think, you know, the community would love to have it. Since I've been there, I've never had one negative comment about the clinic and the services that we provide. So please, grant this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else be heard?
And just to clarify, what you're saying is you would rather extend, if anything is going to be for the extended past the two weeks, that it comes to council, you're more comfortable or feel that the committee or commissioner would feel more comfortable with that, rather than adding another section, or am I, do I have that backwards?
Correct.
The thing, I struggle with you, I'm looking at, I drove through it earlier, earlier this week and again today, and then I'm looking at a Google Map now, image of your campus, and just trying to think of, well, you know, where could you put this, where would it make more sense, because then, hey, we're meeting everything, you know, then we're able to find that compromise and it, it fits on there. And I understand, there's a great deal of traffic that goes in and out, especially through your different entrances and egresses. There is a section of parking lot where there's far less traffic, where I think you would be a little more protected in that area, but I thought, you raised a great point, that there's a little more privacy in the employee lot or more space available, it's on an interior part of the block, rather than an exterior and outward-facing, I mean, I understand that, too. It's a challenging issue, but hopefully not. At least one of these two ways, you know, will at least address and allow them to continue something that I think we all agree is important, right? Just the necessary changes to allow.
You know, for me, this isn't a new use, it's tried and true, they've been doing it for four years, they do it well, they are concerned about the dignity of all people, and they know what they're doing, they know what they're doing, and it's, and it's been tried. I, I don't think we need to have a temporary anything, I, I think they want to know they can have it, you're looking at right now thirty-six times a year, that's not very much at all. Yes, they'll be parked there twenty-four-seven, I get that, but another service they provide is they find other agencies that can help the population that comes for the showers, the testing, and the screenings. And I just don't, it, it's just beyond me, you, you're doing your job, you know, I know that about you, I, I know that about you, so this isn't about you, this is, this is really putting, for me, it's putting the interest of others above our interest and what our ordinances say. And it's, and it's just been proven, and, and it's, it's well-run, it's outstanding, and it's not, it's not something new, it's something we need to continue. I just think it's important to the community that we have this in place, they know it's there, they don't have to worry about any count, future councils or somebody coming in, you know, if they don't run it well, I'm sure you'll pay them a visit, your point's well-taken, that we have to show that they're doing the screenings and the, and the testing. But, you know, these meetings, we have these sessions we go to, the council and the mayor go to at the museum, and the meetings we have, we're always talking about trying to coordinate different agencies and reaching out to help the population that is reaching out for their own, for their own sake. And I, this just seems to be a, a good fit, a good fit for me, it doesn't seem like there's anything wrong with it. You're all in favor of showers, I'm glad to hear everyone say that, so let's just, let's just make this work with this text amendment. If, if you need to make it a little tighter, you need, you know, you, you're concerned about enforcement, I wouldn't be concerned. With their track record and with what George Boykin had presented to us, with their track record, I don't have any, any concerns that we're going to have an enforcement issue with them. I just don't. I mean, it's just, again, it's a well-run, it's a real, well-run facility by very competent people that show the respect and dignity to others, no matter who they are, no matter where they're from. And I just, I just support the text amendment, and I appreciate staff, working with them to, to word this to, to something that you could live with if the council and the mayor decide to pass it. And I, I hope we do pass it.
The reason I'm not for what you guys are proposing, nothing terribly wrong with it, but it's at the whim of the next council. Guess what? Elections have consequences around here, and I don't think that what we're talking about, that they should have to come back. I mean, there's going to be some council member, somebody doesn't like what you're doing up there, it's a given, I mean, that's just the way things work in this society, unfortunately, and, and so that's what concerns me about, I think it's a great idea, but council elections have consequence on these type of amendments that you're proposing, that's what worries me, so I'm going to support it.
I have a question about that then, Mayor. So if we would go about it this way, the way that you and Dan are saying you're in support of, let's play devil's advocate, say we decide that we don't, you know what I mean? I go up there, and man, it's just gotten out of hand, and Dan, I understand it, I know community health is going to run it well, but I think it's important to think about these things. If all of a sudden it's just really become a nuisance, or McClintock Insurance goes out and there's a new business there that really is having issues, or other businesses come forward and say, I'm having issues, what is the avenue then for the overturn or the change, once that is in the code?
Well, that was kind of the idea, maybe potentially of doing the temporary use permit, that you could be, basically...
At least you're revisiting it and saying it's continuing to go well.
I could do the exact same thing with my business that Mr. Waters is talking about. Now, you've got, have ordinances that would come to me, and you could enforce what I'm doing that causes a nuisance or that causes a problem, or causes whatever I'm violating in the ordinances. That's why you have the, that's why you have inspectors, that's why you have, that's why you have those ordinances in place. I mean, I see it more as an, of an enforcement. It's similar to a lot of other issues the council has had before it. We can pass these ordinances, but we also need to have enforcement to go hand in hand, and I think our enforcement, I think our inspectors do a great job, by the way. They, they, you know, a lot of it's on a complaint basis, a complaint filed basis, and, and that's just the way we operate with the, with the staff we have. But I, I just think we have the tools in our toolbox to address if that should happen.
Mr. Vosk, I mean, you can answer for your client, are they, would they be opposed to what, what the planning and zoning and the staff's recommending?
I, I think we would be hesitant, just because Planning and Zoning Commission, sort of, the first time we were in front of them, directed us to sit down with city staff to work on a compromise, and then we didn't get a compromise, we got them pulling back language that they had previously offered. And so I, I think there just would be a lot of concern that we could be heading down a, a road that has no certain conclusion and it'd just be the same place that we are right now. And so I, I think our preference would be for the council just to vote up or down on this text amendment. But it certainly would be your prerogative to, to say to go back. I, my thought process, Mayor, as far as why we proposed this language, was if I was going to rewrite the temporary use structure to create a whole new category for nonprofit uses, it would be far more invasive, I guess, a, a much more extensive process, and potentially lots more to complain about in the, the details there. So this was, I thought, a more elegant and simple solution. But if, if you tell us to talk, we'll talk. I mean, we, we did, we just didn't get any constructive response.
Why do, Chris, I'm sure you, I don't know which one of you, why, I mean, I, am I sensing that you guys don't want this no matter what? Is that what I'm sensing, unless they put it where you wanted to put it, next to the warming shelter, is that your, is that where the planning staff is on this?
At this time, we were just opposed to the amendment as written. We weren't opposed to, again, we did offer an alternative originally.
What was that?
What was that?
What was the alternative?
It had a timeframe to it, I believe it was five events, five days a year.
No, I didn't, that's not acceptable.
Like, five different events for five days.
That's still not acceptable.
And I think what the mayor was meaning, or what I was thinking for the timeframe, was anything beyond one month or two weeks or whatever it was, I just don't know how often they would have to come back and plead their case, you know what I mean, like, or would it go to P and Z, would it come here? Because I, yeah, I just don't think that we should say, well, if we get enough complaints, I guess we'll revisit this, but that's all...
Yeah, but we shouldn't also say we're only going to let them have five events. I mean, there's somewhere...
Correct.
Right.
No, I agree.
That there's, there's not, it's not making sense.
And that's why I'm saying I agree with you.
And for, you can't tell them to put it somewhere they, that they don't control it, number one, in my opinion, that's my vote. You can't tell them they can only have five events when they've been running eighteen to thirty-six events. And I, I get where you, but, I mean, again, I keep going back to that. If they put a shed on this piece of property...
Yes, I know, I thought of that.
You know what? You guys can't do one thing about it.
Or if there was an outdoor public restroom, or, you know what I mean, like, if they built a, but...
You know, we, our church bought a twenty-two acres of ground, now, we didn't buy twenty-two acres to develop it, we brought it for a church. You know what the, this is government's worst, you know what the city assessor said? Until you build a building, you're paying taxes on that property. So what did we do? We didn't build a church, we built a garage, and guess what? We didn't have to pay property taxes anymore. The same type of thing here, they could put a shed on this.
Well, and it's just like Ms. Glazer will remember, we're just in council discussing this exact same thing, pulling a building permit, whether there was intention to build a building for the grading or not, I mean...
And, and I really can't emphasize this enough from the planning and zoning's perspective, we, we, we fought through all this.
I know.
This is not about community health or the shower.
But it is when you, but it is when...
But it's not, that's not what it is for us.
I understand that, but when we're saying, when the planning staff, who gives you a lot of recommendations, and I know you don't have to take them any more than we have to take yours, but I, you know, I think most of us support the Planning and Zoning Commission a lot, and, and want to do what you guys normally come up with, but when you're only saying five days or something, that's not even, that's not even a starting point for in, for the majority of the people of this community. I, listen, I drive by that, I drive down in front of the community health every morning, that's how I get to work, sneak down, get on Pier Street and go down the alley. And I've never, it, when they have that out there, it looks like another mobile medical clinic. It's not anything that's offensive to anybody, and so that's why, why would we limit them to five deals or whatever? I mean, if you guys, I would probably listen to you, but you're going to have to do it because we're only going to do, I mean, this may get voted down today, I don't know where the rest of these council members are, but the solution needs to come back here. If this gets voted down today, that solution needs to come back, that these people can operate this, and if they have to come to the council to get an extended timeframe, that's fine, I guess, if that's what we have to do to get this through. But fi, five events are not even remotely close for me, and I think the public will demand that you're more realistic on this, because I don't know of anybody that's ever said any, I don't run into anybody that ever has said anything bad about the Sulon Health Service. I have not run into anybody yet in this community. Most people are very grateful of the services that they provide to people that don't necessarily have the advantage of these services elsewhere, so...
Would we be able to do something like a six-month? I mean, I feel like this is so limited, but you know what I mean, like, if we did a six-month, that way, because then personally, I mean, every six-month, you're tracking how it's going, how many vaccines you're providing, that document...
Yeah, but the detail's great, Alex, they're, they're going to spend another year or two years trying to work all of that out.
No, they're not.
Well...
They got two weeks, if this gets voted down.
No, but, but they have all worked hard to come up with a great compromise that, that resolves it. I don't know why we're chasing something to try to fix when this doesn't. I mean, you're all to be complimented on working hard on this text amendment, and it does the job. It, I, I don't understand why we're trying to find an alternative or another option when this one is going to work. We know the people, we know the, we know the facility, we know, they've operated for four years, we know all of that, this, and it's, and it's limited. I think Mr. Vosk is exactly right, we're going to be open temporary six months, everybody's going to want to jump onto that and put their uses in there. This, this is very limited, what's being offered today, and thank you for making it limited.
Well, I'm glad you raised that point about the, the amount of time. When, when did, Mr. Vosk, if you, if you don't mind, when did the talks first start with the city? Because it's been, as my recollection serves me, it was the beginning of the summer.
Before they demoed the bank.
So, and those, those may be different...
That's when, that's when the city informed them, but in terms of...
Questions, um, so as far as the text amendment process, the text amendment that you have in front of you was, was something that we drafted. And so then, we got placed on the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda. At the end of that first meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to defer so that we could have a conversation about the, the language of that amendment. And so we had a meeting in between our first Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and then the second one. And, and that was, that, that's where frankly, we were frustrated by the process, because we went in with that five events, five-day-long, and we came out of that with even less, in that they pulled that amendment away without giving us an explanation, and just presented our original text then to Planning and Zoning Commission. And so that's, again, that, that's why we're weary of the process, and, and don't know, because it, it seemed to us, like what Planning and Zoning was saying, was find a way to make this work. And then, you know, the, the amendment that they had put forward, they pulled off the table. So that's, that's the, the timing with respect to the text amendment.
Then I'm not sure if you can answer this or not, but I was informed that the shower unit has been packed up for the season. Is that correct?
We have, I mean...
We've lost all of this time where we could have been providing this...
We basically have lost this season, yes. This, this season, it has, for the most part, been at the Community Health Center's location in South Sioux City. That's where they've stored it this summer, it has not been in use.
So since the warming shelter has closed its doors, which was...
Beginning of July?
Until now, there's, there's been no public shower available.
The service is not available currently, yes.
For thirty-five kids from out of town that enjoyed that shower unit for a week, I can tell you that.
Oh, right, when your life changers were here.
I might add, I just wanted to add to, I guess, to defend staff a little bit here, I think the difficulty is the zoning... Um, I think the difficulty is the zo- the way the zoning code is written. It's, you sort of have permanent buildings and then you have mobile temporary uses. You know, a, a building, a, a trailer on wheels. So the code doesn't really set up, doesn't clear, isn't clear on what, what would, how does that fit? It's, it's, if it was a permanent building on the site, it'd be fine, right? But the fact that it's sort of a mobile, or it is a mobile facility, but it's not really meant to be mobile. It, and, and so when the attempt to try to find some compromise, um, what is it, six months or, you know, what, what, when does it become not mobile? So it's nothing against the, the services being provided.
I'm just saying, they could put a guard shack for the parking lot out there and you'd, you would be helpless to do anything about it.
I suppose, yeah. There, there's gaps in the code. I'm just, I'm just saying, the, the difficulty was not because staff doesn't support the good work of the community health-
Right.
-health center, of course, that we do. It's just fitting it to the, to the code.
Kind of leaning towards they're the bad guys.
Well, our, our concern too is their shower unit is very nice. We all agree that it's great. But there's nothing to stop them from some other time bringing out a flatbed trailer and putting up some shower curtains with this, with this change to the code. And, and they would not do that. Once again, this is not about community health. This is about what the code is stating.
No bad guy in this deal.
I'm not, I'm not saying that anyone is a bad guy. I'm saying there could be. And that's what we have to worry about.
Yeah, I'm not saying that about half either.
Not either, I, I-
I just think we got the perfect solution in front of us. I really do. I'm beating myself, but I-
Yeah.
The time is right to do it. And I, I feel sad and, and really bad that we did not have a season, uh, for showers, you know? And no one's to blame. It's just the way this has unfolded and how it's evolved into what we have today. What we have today, I think, is a, is a great product, a good work product that will answer a lot of questions in the future, I think. You really, you really limited it. I mean, to the, to these, these uses and to the hospital, clinic, medical lab, urgent care facility. Great job.
I feel that the text amendment makes a lot of sense. I think it affects the use of the lot. If it's there the whole year, perhaps it'll even get used that much more, even though it's not open, that they'll see it, people will be aware of it. They'll refer people to when it is open. So I think that our vulnerable, vulnerable population will thoroughly appreciate knowing where to go. I understand totally where you guys are coming from. You're following the code. You're advising what it is. You're interpreting it for the applicant. I one hundred percent get it and please don't, I know it feels like we're someone's, you know, making you feel out that, like you're the bad guy against them, and you're not. But, um, yeah, I think the, that the text amendment looks good, makes sense. I would say maybe community health could look at making a permanent structure there and then using the mobile trailer out in the community in the future. I mean, if it's a great location, it's a great location. Mm-hmm, right.
That's what, that's why you guys are in charge.
Yep, I know.
You know, I've been in your shoes before, believe it or not.
It's hard, it's hard, we know.
It, it, and it is hard, especially when we all agree it's a good, it's a good service.
It is, it's a good service.
And you do a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's, sometimes think what's-
I'm just glad I got to talk some.
Yeah, right, usually it's quick.
Well, I hope-
Hearing is now closed.
I understand what you're saying.
Now, let's clarify. The vote is, if you're in favor of allowing the text amendment, you still vote "aye," not "no," because you move it as presented, correct or not?
Correct.
If you're not in favor of the text amendment, you would vote "no."
That's correct.
Right?
Yes.
Open. Okay.
Passes five zero. I think we would probably not do second and third today. Maybe we'll do second and third next week, but that way everybody will have an opportunity to have input.
Now, the, the hearing has been closed. You've closed the hearing. Do you wish for it to remain open for the second and third readings? To take additional-
I always close the hearing even when we don't do second and third.
Cause then do you reopen it? Oh, you're saying if we are receiving-
Yes, we can aver- we can put it on the agenda with the hearing for next week if that's the direction of the council, we can continue it.
No, if somebody comes, then we'll have to do it then.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's gonna come, but if they do, they will, so. Okay, sixteen's a hearing and ordinance vacating the south portion of the north-south alley and the block bounded by west twenty-sixth, west twenty-seventh, Myrtle and Center Streets. P&amp;Z recommends approval, I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing's now open? Nothing?
You wanna talk for a while?
You can come on, man.
Anyone to be heard.
What was your vote?
Six zero.
And you had six there, that's good. I saw that too, good for you. The hearing is now closed.
Where's Michelle? I was feeling sick.
You won't be here next week.
Yeah, no doubt.
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule? No, I'll move that, second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye, I'll move second, third. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Seventeen's a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of drainage right away adjacent to thirty-six seventeen West Fourth Street Circle. The petitioner is Mark Sorenson. P&amp;Z recommends approval with conditions, I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Did you guys get the, uh, conditions, uh?
With, we're doing, with commissions yet, or with conditions, I'm sorry, yes.
Um, the one thing we talked about with that is not allowing any of the other homeowners, you know, normally when we vacate something, you guys got all that too? Okay.
Yeah, where you normally have to split, but you're recommending they're not-
Offer it all to him.
That was a good idea.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a goofy.
Right.
Good call.
So the motion include, does include the-
Yes.
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
Move that, second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. I'll move second and third.
Second.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Yeah, thank you.
Eighteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the South Bridge Water Treatment Plan High Service Pump Number Two, Adjustable Frequency Dry Project, I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Nineteen's a hearing and resolution determining the area of the city to be an economic development area, design, designating it to be an urban renewal project and adopting Amendment Number Two to the amended and restated Donner Park Urban Renewal Plan. I'll move that, second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty's a hearing and resolution determining area of the city to be an economic development area, designating it to be an urban renewal project and adopting Amendment Number One to the amended and restated Combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Plan. I'll move that, second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty-one's an ordinance amending Chapter three point one four, amended Donner Park Urban Renewal Tax Increment District to revise the legal description to include the expansion of property at seventy-seven twenty Allison Avenue into the South Bridge Number Two Urban Renewal Sub Area. I'll move first reading.
Second.
Passes five zero. I'll move, or is, I'm sorry, is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move that.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Twenty-two's an ordinance amending Chapter three point one zero, Combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Tax Increment District to revise the legal description to include the expansion of Highway seventy-five North Urban Renewal Sub Area at the Forty-Sixth Street to the north. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Uh, discussion twenty-three is a resolution accepting an offer to buy real estate in acceptance with the Sioux Land Initiative for land at seventy-seven twenty Allison Avenue. I'll move that.
Second.
Subject to that, okay. Passes five zero. Twenty-four's a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Municipal Solutions to administer the executive recruitment search for the Public Works Director and Utility Superintendent's position, subject to them providing the insurance requirements as part of the RFP.
Second.
That's just coming.
Excuse me?
The insurance requirement?
They provided a certificate of insurance, but it does not include the correct additional insured status for the city, so we're just waiting for an updated certificate.
Okay, thank you.
Passes five zero. Citizen concerns. Any citizen that wanna be heard, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, Mr. O'Kane.
Nothing today.
All right, Julie.
Um, this weekend I attended the sounds of West Seventh, bought a book for Mr. Tillman. It was such a great event. It was put together by a committee of six. And now that is pretty amazing. And the turnout, the yummy block slot was full. There were people on the sidewalks, the music, the dancers, the drum line. I mean, it was fabulous. An inaugural event. I look forward to it and the next year is just continuing to grow. They were very, um, conscious of taking notes and saying, well, we're gonna say, what should we do next year and what shouldn't we do? And, um, it was just a wonderful event. I really did appreciate it. Next year, hopefully there'll be a mural up in time to celebrate that. So, great event, kudos.
If I hadn't been bringing in those big fish.
Oh, I know, I saw these fish on Facebook, good lord.
Alex.
Um, I just wanted to say we have a citizen, like-
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, come on up.
I'm moving a little bit slowly.
That's all right.
No problem.
So, um, thank you for your time. I came to the council meeting a couple of weeks ago.
You gotta state your name and address again for the record.
Laurie Taylor, sixteen seventeen South Fairmont Street. Um, a couple of days after I came to the council meeting, uh, Mike from the city manager's office called just to let me know that he hadn't forgotten about me and that people from the inspections department were out of the office. And I has, have as of yet to hear from the city based on my concerns and what had happened on the first of September. Um, so at this point, I'll be filing a formal claim with the risk management office of the city of Sioux City.
Okay.
Mike's here.
I'm Mike Klaue. I did leave you a message. And it was my understanding that inspections would follow up with you and you're saying that has not happened?
And they have not.
Okay, very good, they will.
Bob, will you make sure they do? Okay.